Welcome to the Dare County Board of Commissioners Monday, November the 15th, 2021 Board of Commissioners meeting. At this time, I'd like to call on George Laurie for an invocation. George, welcome back. It's always a pleasure to have you here.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Hello, George.
Ladies, how are we doing? All right. First of all, I want to thank the Dare County Commissioners for allowing members of the North Dare Ministers Association to open each of your meetings with a prayer. I don't have any great words of wisdom today, so I thought I'd tell you what I did this year for the betterment of the Outer Banks. After 18 years here and having evacuated for storms three or four times, I decided to purchase a whole house generator. I did so in March, but the COVID supply chain said the actual installation would not be until later in the summer. I thought that was kind of getting close for hurricane season, but I gave the installer the 50% down payment. Then I had a great idea. I talked to the Lord and asked if we could make a deal. I said I'd hold off on that generator until October if the Lord would agree to spare us this hurricane season. Well, the Lord said I'd need to wait at least that long. Not the best deal, but at least the Lord said he'd consider it. Just found out this week my generator won't be ready till January, so I guess he'd hold up his end of the bargain. I'm also not sure where some of you live, but up in Martins Point yesterday, we had a power outage from 10:00 at night till 3:00 in the morning. So, but it's okay. I did find out how much my refrigerator goes up in temperature, so we didn't have any issues. Maybe I should have made similar deals in other years. All right. So, we'll have our prayer. Blessed are you, Lord our God, sovereign of all, who has given us life, sustains us, and brought us to this season. We thank you and sing your praises for our lives which are in your hand, for our souls which are in your keeping. You are goodness, you are compassion, you have always been our hope. Be with these commissioners and others who save, serve Dare County on a daily basis. Guide them in what continues to be the challenge of a lifetime. Soften their hearts and open their minds so that every decision they make is the right one. Humble them to realize they are all human and make mistakes because the residents of Dare County will respect them even more. Almighty God, grace us with your light when our path grows dark, with your strength when we grow weary, and with your support when we falter in our resolve. King of the universe, you have commanded us to do your work for the betterment of the Outer Banks. May this be God's will, and all God's people say amen. Thank you. Wonderful Thanksgiving and a memorable holiday season. Thank you.
Thanks, George.
May we stand for the pledge.
Pledge, ladies and gentlemen. The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, peace, and justice for all.
Before we get any further, Commissioner Couch is unable to be with us this evening, and if you'll keep him in your thoughts and prayers, he has some couple of little medical issue he's facing, so if you'll keep him in your thoughts and prayers, it'd be greatly appreciated. With that being said, county manager?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Item one on the agenda is the chairman's opening remarks.
Okay, I got a couple of items this evening. Might be a little bit longer than normal, and I apologize upfront. But let me just tell you about our kids, Dare County kids. 2021 graduation data. We've had 409 students graduate this past year, 214 from First Flight High School, 141 from Manio High School, and 54 from Cape Hatteras. 25%, guys, this is really good, and it's going to increase. 25% of those kids, 103 are enrolled at COA.
Oh, 103.
103.
Wow, all right.
That of the 409 that graduated, and this is this June. First Flight High School, 45% of them are heading to a four-year school, 32% of them are going to two-year colleges. Manio High School, 50% of the seniors are going to four-year colleges, 42% of them are going to two-year colleges. And Cape Hatteras, 31% of the seniors attending a four-year school, and 33% of the seniors attending a two-year school. So, only 4% of the grads in Manio High School, First Flight High School are going to work. 4%. Rest of them are further in their education. 1% of them are entering the military, and 17% of them are going into the community to work. So, really, really proud of our kids in Dare County for their continued efforts in furthering their education. Next item I have, it seems like we've really, really losing some icons in our community lately. I mean, every, seems like every week. Just this past week, I attended the funeral of Della Bassnight. Most of y'all are aware, Della graduated from Manio High School in 1962. She attended East Carolina University. After living for some time in New York, Della moved to California to pursue a career in marketing and theater. Her occasional work in television included appearances in Smokey and the Bandit, as well as a guest star role in double episode of Matlock. Most of you know what Matlock is, television series alongside her dear friend Andy Griffith. She returned to North Carolina from the West Coast. Della lived in Raleigh, in where she worked for a mutual distribution company and became internationally known. Finally, she retired to her hometown, right here in Manio. She received the Longleaf Pine Award. She became actively involved in numerous activities, including the Garden Club, and she was also a valued member of the Manio Events Committee and served for years as emcee of the annual Manio Christmas Parade. A renowned storyteller, she was known affectionately by all the locals as Aunt Della by most of the children on Roanoke Island. Once again, another icon in our community who has passed away, so if you'll keep the Bassnight family in your thoughts and prayers, I know they'll be greatly appreciated. Next item, once again, we, our kids, they're tough. Manio advances in the state soccer championship. First Flight had an excellent season as well. Manio High School men's soccer team advanced into the regional championship round of the state tournament with an overtime victory on November the 11th, while First Flight High School, unfortunately, their season ended with a tough fourth-round loss. Number-four seed Manio defeated number-one Clinton by 2-1 score in overtime. Now sporting a 14-3-1 record for the season, the Redskins are traveling to Green Central, which was 24-1, on Tuesday, tomorrow, November 16th, for the second regional championship round. So, keep them in your thoughts and prayers there, and maybe they'll bring that championship home as well. And certainly, First Flight was no slouches. They, they ended their season with a 15-2-1 record for the season. Last Wednesday, last Thursday, excuse me, Veterans Day. I want to commend the ceremonies that were held in Southern Shores, in Manio, Naxit, and Kill Devil Hills for those celebrations of our veterans. Last Wednesday, the day prior to Veterans, Dare Center held a annual luncheon for our veterans, and I was happy to be there with Commissioner Ross and Commissioner Bateman and our county manager to celebrate our veterans who served our country and those who continue to serve our country. I have two more things I'd like to address right now, and I think we're going to have some help with our IT folks that will bring on Ms. Nancy Griffin virtually. You just give me the signal, Matt, when we're available to do that, or we, have we been able to hook up with Ms. Griffin yet?
Yes, she is.
Well, hello, Nancy. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can. I can hear very well. Thank you.
Great, great. Well, at this time, I want to recognize and honor certainly a woman who has had a profound lasting impact on thousands of individuals, ranging from toddlers to young children to teenagers and adults for many years, and that's Nancy Griffin. Nancy's joining us virtually. Nancy moved to Dare County from Minnesota in 1982 with her husband Ken and their two children. After visiting the area, they felt called here and described the move as following God's will. Well, ever since then, most of you are quite well aware of this, I'm sure Nancy's dedicated her time and efforts to working with many different organizations here in Dare County. Nancy's dedicated and tireless effort and contributions have undoubtedly had a significant and positive effect on many in our community, and for this, she is to be commended. Nancy worked for Dare County Schools for 29 years, serving in several positions during the course of her career, the most recent of which was Director of Secondary Education. Let me just highlight just how big of an impact she had within the educational community in Dare. I want to, I want to note, earlier this year, Nancy was named 2021 Delta, Kappa, Gamma Golden Key Award winner for our region of the state. This is really a big deal. Delta Gamma Kappa Society internationally is the official association of retired schoolteachers. So, it's very significant, it's a very significant achievement to have your peers nominate you for such a prestigious award. While she was working full-time for Dare County Schools, Nancy also played a critical role in a number of our community's nonprofit organizations, joining many of them when they were first established, and then continuing to serve as they started to grow and ultimately began to thrive the way they do today. She was an original board member and the first-paid director of the Outer Banks Hotline. She also worked hard to help assist the homeless population on the Outer Banks through her work with the OBX Room at the Inn. She was involved in very first state of child conference in 1988. This conference and the ones that followed led to significant outcomes, including funding for school nurses at every county school, the development of Dare Youth Center in Kill Devil Hills, as well as establishment of the Children of Youth Partnership for Dare County. Nancy's been an integral part of the Children of Youth Partnership since day one, and in fact, she was so passionate about her work there that she eventually stepped up to take an event more active, an active role in the organization by serving as its executive director for five years. Nancy's spirit of giving continued with yet another organization she has been involved with from its beginning, the Saving Lives Task Force. Nancy served as part of this group since their first meeting back in the summer of 2014, and she has served as a board member from the beginning. She's a true woman of faith. As a founding member of Roanoke Island Presbyterian Church, she was instrumental in meeting another community's need when the church started a daycare in close proximity to Manio High School, that she allowed young parents to continue their education while having their infants close by. As you can see, Nancy's contributed countless hours of her time and energy to local youth and her community over the course of many decades. All of us are incredibly blessed to have been on receiving end of Nancy's service and dedication to Dare County over many years. So, at this time, I'd like to honor Nancy by awarding her the Certificate of Appreciation on behalf of this entire Board of Commissioners. Nancy, we'll continue having this award delivered to you later this week. We wish you well. You and Ken move to the southwestern part of the state. Without a doubt, you will be missed. Thank you again for all you have done for Dare County, and we're truly a better community because of you. I'd like to hold this plaque up, Nancy, the Certificate of Appreciation. Hopefully, you can see this right now, but it states, Nancy Griffin, in grateful recognition of her passion, dedication, tireless efforts to serve the people of Dare County through her work with Dare County Schools, the Children of Youth Partnership for Dare County, OBX Room at the Inn, and the Saving Lives Task Force. Griffin has devoted countless hours of her time and energy to working with these essential organizations over the course of almost four decades, playing an integral role in many of their ongoing efforts from the early days of their establishment. The immense knowledge, support, and guidance she has provided along the way has ultimately allowed these organizations to grow into the incredible impactful and thriving entities that they are today. The Dare County Board of Commissioners salutes Nancy Griffin for the extraordinary effort to improve the lives of individuals of all ages and for the, for the profound and positive impact that her service continues to have year after year on all the residents and visitors of Dare County. And it's signed by myself, Chairman of Dare County Board of Commissioners. Nancy, we will get to, to you guys, to you very soon. So, God bless you and thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. If I could just say, just a word, I just want to let everyone know that we're very grateful to this community that, from the beginning, welcomed our family as friends rather than as strangers. And I thank each one in the community who continues to work to share the best of themselves with others. It shows that when we all work together, we become stronger and better and more resilient than we ever could on our own. And so, let's determine to always look for our common ground and truly care for one another so we can all thrive going forward.
Thank you so much, Nancy. God bless you.
Thank you.
Okay, with that being said, I have one more item I'd like to present, and this is a resolution to rename the Dare County Center as the Virginia Tillet Center. I'd ask the county manager to please read that resolution.
Whereas, Virginia Tillet was a professional educator and Outer Banks community leader who served the residents and visitors of Dare County, North Carolina, as an elected official for more than 30 years. And whereas Virginia Tillet served in the position of both chair, vice-chair on the Dare County Board of Education for 20 years, and in 2002 was elected to the Dare County Board of Commissioners, where she served as a commissioner for 12 years. And whereas Virginia Tillet has been honored as the recipient of a wide variety of awards over the past several decades, including the Dare County Outstanding Citizen of the Year Award and the Outer Banks Chamber of Commerce Citizen of the Year Award, both of which she received in 2015. And whereas in 2006, Virginia Tillet was honored by the North Carolina Governor Michael Easley, who awarded her the prestigious Order of the Longleaf Pine Award in April of 2021. Virginia Tillet was recognized for her accomplishments and dedication to servant leadership by the North Carolina Black Alliance, who presented her with a 2021 Trailblazer Award. And whereas, as a Dare County Commissioner, Virginia Tillet played an instrumental role in the development of the Dare County Center, a multi-generational facility on Roanoke Island that provides resources, programs, and activities designed to enhance the lives of all Dare County citizens, ranging from youth and adults to seniors and families. And whereas, without Virginia Tillet's tireless efforts and her vision for the facility, specifically as a place where individuals of all ages could get together and learn from one another, these individuals would not benefit from the wide array of programs and services it offers to the Dare County community. And whereas, renaming the Dare County Center as the Virginia Tillet Center recognizes Virginia Tillet's dedication to the community where she was born and raised and ensures her lasting legacy as a Dare County Trailblazer, whose service and leadership has had a proud and a profound and positive impact on thousands of Dare County residents over the years. Therefore, be it resolved that the Dare County Board of Commissioners hereby declare that in honor of her life and many significant contributions as a longtime community leader, the Dare County Center will be officially renamed the Virginia Tillet Center this the 15th day of November, 2021.
Motion to approve.
There's a motion on the board by Commissioner House.
Second.
To, to approve, and it's been seconded by the vice-chair and Commissioner Bateman. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like send. Motion carries unanimously. As a second part of this, Johnny and Michael, will you guys come up and join me? Michael over here and Johnny over here. Maya, his daughter, absolutely. I'm in my ninth year on this board. I've had to make a lot of presentations, do a lot of, do a lot of talks in different, different places, different things. I don't think I've ever been honored anymore from a family to ask me to say a few words at their mother's funeral. When, when I talked to Johnny and Michael about that, Johnny called me, texted me immediately when the passing of his mother, and of course, I was devastated, and I texted him right back, and the very next morning, I was over at the house and took him some, some of those famous Mike Kelly ham biscuits, and we, we chit-chatted for a while, and both of them looked at me and said, "Bob, mother, we would love for you to say a few comments on behalf of the board at the funeral." And I said, "Man, I'd be honored, Johnny, Michael." I thought about what I wanted to say at that funeral. I hope I made you guys proud. You know, Ms. Virginia and I, we served two years on this board before she, she went off the board, and we got to know either, each other really, really well. We're different sides of the aisle. We didn't always agree on every single item, but the one, the one thing that Ms. Virginia and I were adamant about was leaving politics off of the board and doing what was in the best interest of our citizens of Dare County. And that I'm most, most proud of. I'm most proud of that. And we would have some stressful meetings, and we would, I recall having one particular stressful meeting that Ms. Virginia and I would, we were the Lone Rangers on this item, Michael and Johnny, and, and we didn't win. But to kind of break the ice after the meeting, and I told this at the funeral, I said, "Ms. Virginia," we were walking out the door, I said, "Have you heard the latest about Little Johnny?" And I don't mean this Little Johnny. I said, "The Little Johnny, you know, the one in school." She, "Oh, yeah, Bob, I've heard those." I said, "Well, have you heard the latest one?" She said, "No, no." She said, "I said, 'Well, the teacher asked him that, for an assignment that come back to school the next day and tell him about, you know, anything major that might have happened last week.'" So, Little Johnny, you know, he comes to school, and the teacher goes through the class, and she's heard a few of them, and comes, Little Johnny's turn. Teacher looks at him, she says, "Okay, Johnny." She said, "Anything unusual happen last week?" He said, "Well, teacher, yeah, sure did. My, my dad fell in the well." And the teacher said, immediately, she said, "Oh, my God, Johnny." She said, "Is he all right?" She, Little Johnny looked at him and said, "Teach, he must be. He stopped yelling yesterday." So, I told, I told that joke to Ms. Virginia to kind of break the ice going out the door, and she never forgot that. And every time we'd come to a meeting, she'd always look, look at me and say, "Bob, you got any more Little Johnny jokes later?" I said, "Well, I'm sure I could come up with a few, Ms. Virginia, but anyhow, I have the utmost respect for Ms. Virginia. You've heard in this resolution all that she's done for our community. I mean, my God, it's incredible what she's done, and this is the least we could do to, to recognize her in the community, and that's to rename the Dare County Board of Commissioners agreed unanimously way before tonight that that was the proper thing to do. And so, we're, I'm very, very proud that Dare County Board of Commissioners have done this. County manager tells me Johnny and Michael that they're working on the lettering right now. They can't get the lettering quick enough for the building. But I want to present both of you the resolution that Bobby read. Michael, one for you. Johnny, one for you. That's the resolution that county manager read this evening. Our board passed unanimously, and I'm proud of you. Your mother raised two fine young men, and I will never, ever forget the time that we spent on this board together, doing what was right in the best interest of Dare County. So, God bless y'all.
Mr. Chairman, thank you so much. Mr. Vice Chairman, Commissioners, Bobby, thank you guys. I mean, this really means a lot to our family. I'm going to try to keep this together. We had talked about this, because that was, this, that senior, that center was, I really loved that thing, and she really wanted to, I mean, I know she's smiling right now. I know she's smiling. But for the county to do this, it means a lot to us. It means a lot to our family, that you can see a lot of them here today. But, Mr. Chairman, thank you again.
Thank you, gentlemen.
We really appreciate all you guys so much.
You bet.
That's all I got.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael, would you like to say a few words?
He said it all, but...
I would also like to thank everyone also. This is a great honor, and that... This is a great honor, and that building was my mom's baby. And for you all to recognize her by naming it after her, and all of y'all know in here how hard she struggled to get that building going and all the roadblocks, but it came to pass. And to be, you know, be dedicated to her with her name, it's no words that can describe the way we feel, and thank everyone for everything you guys do for the county. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Michael. Did you get some photos? Did you get some photos? Yeah.
No, sir. That's...
Really, really awesome. County Manager, that concludes Chairman's comments.
Chairman, that brings us to Item 2 on the agenda. That's public comment. Ladies and gentlemen, now's the time that's been set aside for public comment. If you have public comment this evening and you've not signed up, raise your hand. I'll recognize you. When I do, please come to the podium, state your name and where you're from. Please limit your comments to five minutes. There's a green light that will come on when your time begins, a yellow light that will come on when you have about a minute left, and a red light that will come on when your time is up and you need to conclude your remarks. If you're here to speak with regard to the public hearing on the amendments to the definitions of the hotel motel or the public hearing with regard to the R3-C2 zoning amendments, please wait till we call those items. But other than that, if you have public comment this time, I'll come forward. On my sheet, the only sign up I have is Ray Halliwell.
Mr. Halliwell, welcome this evening.
Hi, Mr. Chairman. Lived here in Dare County for about 18 years, and now live in the mountains of North Carolina. But I'm here tonight, Mr. Chairman, to let you know that we're going to address an issue that's a concern to myself and various and sundry lots of people. But under the North Carolina Utilities Commission Act, and under Chapter 62 of that, affords us the opportunity to go look for an emergency rate increase relative to our sewer plant in Avon. And under the... Backing up, that sewer plant was commissioned in 1989, long before I arrived here. And so when we... It was, at that point in time, a 50,000-gallon package plant, and because of the incredible successes that we experienced in Avon and in Kinnick's Shores, we upgraded that facility from 50,000 gallons a day to 340,000 gallons a day, anticipating what would happen in the foreseeable future and all the growth of the community. Well, along with that, there are peaks and valleys in the economy, needless to say, and we certainly experienced that. But during that timeframe, ours was commissioned in 2003. And so from that point forward, we've been dealing with the rates that occurred all the way back from 1989. So as a result of that, there has not been a rate increase at Kinnick's Shores since 1989. Normally, within the community, there are probably... All the rate increases are probably two, three, four, maybe, in some cases, five. But we're encountering that now and see if we can get current on those matters. I think they're about into the subchapter of the emergency rate increases. They identified about 46 items that you can address in that category, and 46 or 47, I believe it is, things that can be addressed under that act. So, and then they get into the sub-subchapters of that, and that's the direction that we're going to be heading in and to wrap that up. But by the next time you gather, we'll have this wrapped up and have something, I think, that will be interesting to you, and I thank you very much for that.
Thank you, Mr. Halliwell.
Thanks, Ray.
Any other public comment tonight? Anyone else like to speak at public comment? Seeing none, is there any public comment in Buxton?
No comment from Buxton.
That, Mr. Chairman, we would close the public comment period and move to Item 3. Item 3 is a public hearing on amendments to the definitions of hotel and motel. On my sign-up sheet, I do not have anybody signed up for that. The same rules will apply here. Is there anyone that would like to speak to that issue tonight? Seeing those hands here, is there anyone that would like to speak to that issue in Buxton?
No comment for Buxton.
That, Mr. Chairman? I think Donna is here to answer any questions that you have, and it's before you for action.
Okay. Anyone have any questions of Donna? Then I will ask the board what's their pleasure.
Move the draft amendments to the definitions of hotel and motel be adopted. A statement of consistency and reasonableness as prepared by staff is adopted as part of this motion.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor by the Vice Chairman to amend the definition, and it's been seconded by Commissioner Tobin. Floor is open for further discussion. Hearing none, those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like so? Motion carries unanimous. County Manager, that brings us to Item 4, and I will request the board to recuse myself from Item 4 since I have a relationship with the applicant business-wise. So may I ask in the board?
Move to approve.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor by the Vice Chairman that's been seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like so? Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen.
This is a public hearing with regard to a change in the R3-C2 zoning amendments. Same rules apply. I have no one signed up. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to that issue tonight? Seeing none, is there anyone in Buxton that would like to speak to that issue?
Yes, I have one speaker, Ms. Pat Barto.
Okay.
Good evening. I thank you for giving me this time. I came here tonight to express my concerns about the residential housing units that are proposed in the Hatteras Island Shopping Center. This issue is really important because it is something that has not come up before. I just spoke to Donna Creve today, and I said, "Donna, how many of these housing units do we have in any other shopping area in all of Dare County?" And the answer I heard was none. That makes this a big deal because it's a precedent that we are setting for businesses throughout Dare County, because I said, "Donna, what happens if this goes through?" And she said, "Then I'm sure that other shopping centers may want to do similar things." That could be a good thing, but let's talk about our shopping center, the Hatteras Island Shopping Center. It's the largest and busiest one on Hatteras Island. We have the number-one Food Lion store in the entire Food Lion chain. It is so busy on a weekend during the season that you cannot find a parking space. You have to drive around and hopefully wait for an opening or move down to the other end of the parking lot just to find a space, and it's open 24/7. The shopping center not only contains the largest food store on the island, it also has seven stores and restaurants that offer meals and desserts, Gotta Bank, The Dollar Tree, Wings, Jewelry Store, Seafood Market, Vacation Rental Office, and of course, the only Ace Hardware store on the entire island.
Need to present anything.
And besides all this, it is used multiple times, both daily and weekly, by a huge number of island tourists and residents who need to buy food and miscellaneous items. So here's some of my questions, okay? Where, if we do put in housing units, where do the children play? Where do you walk your dog? Can you have a dog? If you have a dog, do you have to have a vaccination certificate, since they might accidentally bite someone in the shopping center? How do you navigate the parking lot when these residents have bought groceries and other items and are trying to get into their units while you have people driving through the shopping center because the movie theater is not on the end? You have Ace Hardware beyond them, and you have the Food Lion at the other end, and you've got all kinds of stores in between. It's gonna be a little exciting. Then how many parking spaces do residents get? Are these marked off, or are they just on their own to fend for themselves? Will there be speed limits in the parking lot? And by the way, since this lot includes both land in a lake and in the marsh, as well as high ground, how much of it specifically can be used for housing? Have you thought about the burden this puts on our entire community of people who come to this parking lot expecting to shop and who will now have to navigate around a residential community smack dab in the parking lot? So the comment was made that this would give us more residence for the shopping center employees, but how do we know this will be the ultimate end? You recently allowed the Buxton Trailer Court, where many island workers lived, to be turned into an Airbnb rental place. I talked to some of the displaced workers, and their stories are pretty sad. You rezoned the final land section in Kinnick's Shores into smaller home sizes to accommodate low-income housing, and what did we get? $500,000, 1,500-square-foot homes, and the latest one is going for $650,000, and it's under contract. How's that for low-cost housing? What happens when these so-called worker units at the shopping center become more profitable as Airbnb vacation spots, where people can have all of their amenities right there in the shopping center, and they don't have to go very far to get anything they want, from food to beach chairs to curling irons and $1 snacks? Everything is there. Have you considered these things?
Any other public comment from Buxton?
No further comment from Buxton.
That, Mr. Chairman, we'll close the public hearing, and it's before the board. At your pleasure, Donna is here to answer any questions that you might have as well.
Does anyone have any questions to Donna?
I did. I just want to confirm, Donna, that this is a very narrow amendment addressing only commercial development prior to 1992?
That is correct, and I just want to say for the record that without this density bonus, multifamily housing can be built on the site today.
Right. I thought that's right. Ten per acre, now 20.
They're just asking for a little bit more, and Ms. Barto made the statement that this is a precedent, and I will tell you that, in my opinion, it's a good precedent.
Second question's got to be connected to a water treatment plant, wastewater treatment. In the amendment, it says it's only applied if connected to a waste...
Central wastewater treatment and collection plant. Yes, sir.
And third question, how many total units were being proposed in this, where the theater is?
Well, we haven't seen a site plan yet, so I've just had conversations with the developers, but I'm thinking it's probably going to be in the area of 20 to 24.
20 to 24.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Donna.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else have questions? Donna, just the questions that were raised or concerns that were raised regarding the parking, the pets, and the change of the apartments to potentially Airbnbs, and could you address some of that, please?
Yes, sir. I'll be glad to, and I had these same conversations with Ms. Barto earlier today. We have no control over the tenure and the length of time that they occupy an apartment or a multifamily, so we don't get involved in Airbnbs. They're no different than if you rent your house out on a year-round basis or on a monthly basis. This is a text amendment, and when we have text amendments, we don't have a site plan that's associated with that. And some of those concerns that she expressed about the parking, they will be addressed if and when there is a specific site plan that's submitted to us, and at which time they'll have to demonstrate that they meet the parking requirements that apply to multifamily housing. And they know that, and they'll develop a site plan, and it'll be a standalone building, and it'll be one building, most likely on one lot, and that'll be an administrative approval, and it will meet the terms of the Dare County zoning ordinance before it's approved and it's issued building permits. Now, people walking pets or children having somewhere to play, that's beyond the scope of the involvement of the Dare County Planning Board, Dare County Planning Department, and the Board of Commissioners. That's a choice that people who lease those apartments will have to make. But, you know, people live in cities, and they walk dogs, and they have children that don't have playgrounds out in front of them, and so some of her concerns were a little bit off the range, if you will, and not pertinent to this land use amendment. The amendments are designed to allow them to redevelop a building that's been sitting vacant for years. Yes, it's a busy site. It would be just as busy if they reopened up the theater, and so we're dealing with a commercial development that's there that predates any zoning on Hatteras Island. It's been there a long time. The wastewater treatment plant, it's connected to that. It's been connected to that since 1986 or '85 or whenever it was. It was always designed to be that. So it's written to be very narrow in its scope, the way that we typically write ordinances, and I can't see this replicating itself any other place, but I want to stress again that they can still go in there and build multifamily, whether you approve this amendment or not. It's just, I guess, their business plan is such that they think that they can accommodate more there on the site, and it's my... I anticipate that this will be used for some of the tenants in that shopping center. They're probably Food Lion, probably some of their other tenants. The individuals that own Hatteras Island Plaza did a group development back behind that property on a cluster home under some of the amendments that we adopted in 2019, and it's my understanding that they're leased by Food Lion there. So this is something that addresses a very acute issue that we've been trying to deal with. And I think, you know, in 2018 and 2019, when we started with these housing amendments, it was our goal to try to cultivate some amendments and some interest in the private sector to step up and do exactly what the developers are hoping to do here. And so that's a little bit long-winded to your question there, but I'm gonna stop right there unless you have any other questions.
Thank you, Donna. That was perfect. Does anyone have any other questions?
I'll make a motion.
Pleasure, board.
I move the draft amendments to the R3 district and the C3 district be adopted as recommended by the planning board. A statement of consistency and reasonableness prepared by staff is adopted as part of this motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Donna, Donna Creve?
Yes, sir.
How much longer are you going to be in this position?
Not that I'm counting, but it's 47 days. That's including the holidays and...
I make a motion. We take her hostage and refuse to allow her to retire. We take her hostage and refuse to allow her to retire.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Donna.
Chairman, that brings us to item five on the agenda. And this is a proclamation for Dare County School Choice Week. Would you like me to read the proclamation?
Yes, sir, if you would, please.
Whereas all children in Dare County should have access to the highest quality education possible. And whereas Dare County recognizes the important role that an effective education plays in preparing all students in Dare County to be successful adults. And whereas quality education is critically important to the economic vitality of Dare County. And whereas Dare County is the home to a multitude of high-quality public and non-public schools from which parents can choose for their children, in addition to families who educate their children in the home. And whereas educational variety not only helps to diversify our economy, but also enhances the vibrancy of our community. And whereas Dare County has many high-quality teaching professionals in all types of school settings who are committed to educating our children. And whereas School Choice Week is celebrated across the country by millions of students, parents, educators, schools, and organizations to raise awareness of the need for effective educational options. Now therefore, the Dare County Board of Commissioners hereby recognize and proclaim January 23rd through 29th, 2022, as Dare County School Choice Week, and call this observance to the attention of all Dare County citizens. This is the 15th day of November, 2021.
Move to approve.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor by the vice chairman to approve this proclamation. And it's been seconded by Commissioner Ross. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who like sent? Motion carries unanimous.
Next is your consent agenda. On the consent agenda, you have the approval of the minutes from November 1st. You have an NC DOT right-of-way three-party encroachment agreement for the Hatteras Marlin Club project. You have record retention disposition schedule updates. You have the Health and Human Services Public Health Division Respirator Fit Testing Services. And you have the Tax Collector's Report.
Move to approve.
There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner House to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Tobin. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who like sent? Motion carries unanimous.
Next on the agenda, Mr. Chairman, are your board appointments. First, you have the planning board. Michael Barr resigned in September of 2021 for District 2. You have applications from John DeBoy and Amanda Hooper. They're in your packet for the board's consideration in filling this term through February of 2023.
Move to approve, John DeBoy.
There's a motion on the floor by the vice chairman.
Second.
It's been seconded by Commissioner Bateman? Yes. Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those oppose? Motion carries unanimous.
Next is the Board of Equalization and Review. The terms of Nelson v. Jones, Jonathan Waddell, Jeffrey Scott, Terry Gore, and Charles Evans expire in December. All would like to be reappointed for another one-year term.
Move to reappoint.
There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner House to reappoint. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vice Chairman Overman. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who like sent? Motion carries unanimous.
And then last is the Special Motor Vehicle Evaluation Board. The terms of Danny Couch, Doc Sawyer, and David Light expire in December, and all would like to be reappointed.
Reappoint all?
Motion on the floor by Commissioner House to reappoint all. Been seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who like sent? Motion carries unanimous.
Chairman, next on agenda, we need a closed session, but you might want to wait until after Commissioner's business for that? Or would you rather do it now?
What would be the pleasure of the board? You wanna do the Commissioners now?
Yeah.
Okay. Absolutely.
Then we'll come back to that.
All right. We will certainly do that. And I'll ask Commissioner Bateman if he would kick this off this evening.
Yes, sir. I'd be glad to. Just like to, what we did for Nancy and for Virginia was what we need to do. But both those young ladies were a great part of our community and so forth. And I served on the board with Room at the End and did many projects with Nancy, as well as with the Saving Lives Task Force. And I can't say enough about Ms. Virginia over the years, the things that she did for the community. So I think this board stepped to the plate and did what they needed to do. And I'm proud of everybody. Commissioner House has, I believe, a resolution coming up. I would like to tell you all, as far as the shrimping is concerned, think about this. My little restaurant, we sell 30,000 pounds of shrimp of one size a year. Just one-size shrimp. Let's not count the Sugar Shack. Let's not count commercially what we sell. This has a way of, it's gonna impact us the way we're never gonna believe if they allow those guys to do what they're trying to do. Economically, it's going to be devastating for not only families, but our whole economy on the Outer Banks. Just this week, I don't know whether somebody let the news out to the Taiwanese and to the Chinese and so forth. I'm getting all these emails from these companies that are trying to sell shrimp. Now, why are we getting it now for? I don't understand. Because there's farm-raised product. It's not domestic, that we don't make any money off of, that they're trying to sell us. If we give up air national, air-treasured products, and we have to go buy from somewhere else, it's ridiculous. It's un-American, y'all. It pisses the devil out of me. I don't understand it. They've already done it with crab meat. Majority of the crab meat that comes in the United States now is China. I'm not selling crab cakes in my restaurant right this minute because I'm not selling Chinese crab meat. You understand? It's sickening. And they're trying to do the same thing to our shrimping industry. So, I mean, I'm upset about this thing. And I just feel like we're, everything that our ancestors and the people down here that work so hard for, the commercial fishermen, hard workers, everything they've done, we're gonna lose if we allow them to do this.
You're rightly upset, Commissioner.
Huh?
You're rightly upset, as we all are.
Anyway, that's all I got. And I didn't mean to try to steal your thunder, Steve, but, you know, what you're trying to do is great. And I back you 100%.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bateman. Your first item really makes you feel good when you do something for people, doesn't it?
It does.
Best part of the job.
And your second issue, I couldn't echo it more, and we'll hear more from Steve, but I don't understand. I just don't understand the human mind in that process of trying to eliminate one of the oldest professions in the world.
It defies logic, Mr. Chairman. It defies any rational logic.
It really does, Commissioner.
Yes, sir.
It's unbelievable. Vice Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Like Commissioner Bateman, I'd like to say a word or two about Nancy Griffin. Worked very, very closely with Nancy on a number of things, but primarily on Saving Lives Task Force. She was absolutely instrumental in the creation and the articles as a proofreader unparalleled, as far as our newsletter that comes out quarterly. Nancy could find a come-out-of-place better than anybody I've ever seen in my life. But she was really, really fantastic on, not only critiquing that, but also on content. She worked tirelessly, especially for the kids of Dare County. I mean, she loved every one of them, and she did everything she could. They were always her first interest. And I want to say that I am eternally appreciative of her service, not only on the things that we worked on together, but for everything she did for Dare County. She was very special. Virginia and I had the opportunity to share, worked a few years with her, and we worked on a few projects together, not the least of which was the park or the rest area up at the north end. I think that may have been the very first thing. But she was a hoot to work with, I'll tell you right now. It was fun. She wanted it done right, but she was really a lot of fun to work with. And congratulations to her and her family on the honor of renaming the Dare Center the Virginia Tillot Center. As you said, Mr. Chairman, that was the right thing to do. With regard to the shrimping and fishing, I'll tell you. This has been an ongoing thing. I first started going to the marine fisheries meetings probably around 2012, something like that, 2013, maybe. And wound up speaking at several of those, primarily on the issues of shrimping. And this is when they wanted to close shrimping in the sounds. And they wanted to put all these restrictions on us. It was quite interesting that the things that are going on now are the same song, it's just a different verse. And they have poked and prodded, and poked and prodded. And they finally found a way to, let's say, gain access on something that they feel like has some traction. But I tell you what, guys, just as Urban said a while ago, if we lose the ability as a country to feed ourselves, we are really in deep stuff. We just cannot allow that to happen. And these so-called purient interests that are spoken by the opposition on this really don't pass the smell test. I mean, you just have to say that. It hadn't been that long ago, we were sitting here talking about what they'd done to the flounder season in North Carolina. It's just absolutely ridiculous. And it's something that, at some point in time, some really serious stands are going to have to be taken. You know, there's a lawsuit now where they're suing the state of North Carolina trying to do through the courts what they've been unable to do through the legislature, through votes in the legislature. And it is absolutely ridiculous. I hope some of the other guys speak to the same thing. But just remember what they did, the flounders. Remember what they've been trying to do to shrimp since, to my recollection, and my working directly with it since at least 2013. It is just absolutely ridiculous. And I hope this lawsuit falls on its face. And we need to continue with whatever it takes. I think the resolution that will be spoken to here shortly is an important part of this. If we need to add to that a letter that's assigned by the chairman or signed by all of us, doesn't matter to me. But we need, if adding that to the resolution and sent to the people that are prominent in this will help, then we need to do it. There's an old saying that quantity has its own quality. And this may be something that we can't get enough forces in the air on. But it's another ridiculous note in a long line of trying to mess this fishery up. So anyway, that's all I have, and I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. Point well made. Commissioner Tobin?
Yeah, gosh, I don't even know where to start on the shrimping and fishing thing. You guys have said it well. I commercial fish for 15 years at the flounder fishery. And I've watched the Marine Fisheries Commission destroy that. The shrimping industry is gonna be destroyed the same way if this passes. It's just absolutely ridiculous what they're trying to do. With that said, I think enough has been said on the topic. So I'll move on to the dredge. The dredge is still on time and on schedule. We did receive a bill, or a change order, so to speak, on the price of steel. There's an acceleration clause in that contract, and the price of steel has soared. And luckily, it's not that much. But I think that's gonna have to end up being paid. Also, there's a hiccup on the survey boat. As Bobby knows, the survey boat was contested by the state as part of the project. And we are adding a line in some legislation coming up here. Should be done by the end of the year. That's three words that includes, that puts the survey boat on that. So we'll be able to finance a survey boat with that money, that private partnership money. Along things of saying we're losing too many good people, a good friend of mine, Steve Howell. Steve and Martha Howell were both husband and wife. And he's from Plymouth. I don't know. Do you know him, Bobby, Steve Howell? Steve passed away last week, 72 years old. He passed away in his sleep. Steve was one of the Brahm salesmen for our area. So he sold product to almost all the restaurants. He sold product to everybody. And he retired a few years ago, and his wife Martha also worked for Brahm. And she took over all his accounts. I saw Martha probably every two weeks. But anyway, prayers go out to the family and to Martha and their daughter Casey. They're just super-nice people. That's all I got.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. Commissioner Ross?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a brief report on the Albemarle Commission on which I sit. The federal grant money for area agency on aging, as well as economic development and the workforce development, continues to pour in. And the latest budget amendment now has the budget just over $9 million a year, whereas in 2019, we were just over $6 million. So our citizens need not fear. There are plenty of resources being provided, and we will ensure any of the recipients of either Meals on Wheels, congregate meals, workforce and job counseling-related services will indeed be satisfied. So that's very good. Wednesday coming up, Mr. Chairman, we will be meeting, Mr. Vice Chairman, as a five-on-five with the school board and the superintendent and his senior staff. And I look forward to that meeting to delve deeper into all of the actions and activities at our schools. We had the resolution today on, obviously, school choice. And I believe we have very, very good schools. And I will be looking forward, again, after the Board of Education meeting recently, where Chairman Woodard and I were attendance this past week, it should be an interesting five-on-five. We will be holding an audit committee meeting. That would be Finance Director Claus and I and the others on the audit committee, Commissioner Urban, Bateman. We will be doing so in the next couple of weeks, and we'll schedule that. We have a very good audit, and we'll get final report, I believe, Dave, you said, after the first of the year, in presentation here, our first meeting in January. Thank you. Donna's not here, but thank you to Donna Creef on that explanation. The number-one issue that we confront, week after week, month after month, is housing needs. And I was just very, very encouraged to see this as a possible multifamily development. And we met earlier today on the Bowser Town project and continued to push hard for progress and resolution that will result in action for here in Dare County. I would echo, just briefly, Ms. Virginia and Ms. Nancy. Dare County is very lucky to have a couple of giants like them service. So you all have said it well. I echo those comments and sentiments. And it was great to see Ms. Virginia's family here for the presentation. That was, that's the best part of the job, guys, for me, anyway, by far. And I will conclude with the discussion we had at last meeting with Commissioner Tobin and I and the Joint Community Advisory Committee and the regulations that have basically thrown roadblocks in the way of volunteers serving on that advisory board to ensure the proper and best care for our seniors and our elderly. And I know I have, I know we all feel the same sense of responsibility and will continue to push and pursue on that matter to find out what can be done to alleviate these roadblocks. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Ross. Commissioner House?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First off, with Nancy Griffin, just a remarkable woman, and accolades to her for all that she's done for Dare County. And also for Ms. Virginia Tillot. The only thing I can say about her that I don't think has been said tonight is that when you first would meet her, and within the first two or three seconds or sentences of the conversation, you realized you just met a very dear friend for life. And she was just that type of person.
She was.
And my hat's off to her family. And our hat's off to, my hat is off to the rest of our commissioners here to ensure her legacy.
of our commissioners here to ensure her legacy being named at the Dare Center. As all of the other commissioners have talked about tonight, we do have an issue with our shrimping. Every five years, every Marine Fishery Plan has to be reviewed, and that's by legislation. And in doing so, when they review it, they have to set up public comments for scoping of what to do. And even, and that's a broad stroke of what they can do. And that broad stroke can range to being the status quo of what it is now with no changes, or they can make it so that it's a complete block of all of that particular fishery. And with that, sometimes they come into the middle and work right. The thing about the scoping and the amendment, this will be a second amendment to the shrimping, and even in the initial fishery management plan for shrimp was one sole objective, and that was to reduce bycatch of our shrimp trawlers and our shrimping industry. Now, as it has come here with us present, they opened up the scoping period in January 7th through the 21st of 2020, right in the middle of COVID. They did have three scoping meetings, one in Washington, one in Morehead City, one in Wilmington. Notice none of them are here in Dare County. Yet Dare County is going to suffer the most because of it. The extreme part they're talking about closing is that certain areas of the mouth of the Stumpy Point Bay, which are currently open to shrimping, they're closed, or proposing Parts of the northern region, which covers the Croatan Sound, Roanoke Sound, Pamlico Sound, Pamlico River, Bay River, Neuse River, and their tributaries. Parts they're talking about closing is from Oregon Inlet North. So everything around where we're sitting right now would be closed to shrimping. As we know it right now, a lot of our shrimpers here locally, some of them do it part-time because they can't afford to do it on a full-time basis. So a lot of our shrimpers do it as a part-time, and most of those part-time shrimpers do it right in, right around where we are here, Roanoke Island. There's also a shrimp charter boat that runs out of Pirate's Cove and does the same thing right around the Roanoke Island right here. If this amendment passes, that business is most likely to go out of business. And that's a charter where our tourists come down, and they can actually physically go out and shrimp and see what it's all about. That'll be something that'll be taken away from them. Plus the fact of there's nothing better in this world than fresh wild-caught shrimp. Even in a recent television show with Gordon Ramsay, he mentioned how much better wild shrimp was. And even in this program, he mentioned how sweet the shrimp were that he had from North Carolina. This is a world-renowned Michelin-starred chef commenting on North Carolina shrimp. So we have together a resolution opposing any changes to the shrimp management plan, which will be voted on this week by the North Carolina Marine Fisheries. County Manager, could you read the resolution, please?
Sure.
And I would also, at this time, make the motion to approve once it's read.
Whereas in 1992, North Carolina became the first state to require all shrimp trawlers to use bycatch reduction devices, BDRs. And whereas the NC Division of Marine Fisheries adopted the NC Shrimp Fisheries Management Plan in April of 2006 to reduce bycatch from both commercial and recreational shrimping. And whereas the Division of Marine Fisheries adopted Amendment 1 to the NC Shrimp Fisheries Management Plan in February of 2015, which recommended a wider range of certified bycatch reduction devices to choose from, and the requirement of two BRDs in shrimp trawlers and skimmer trawls beginning in June of 2015. And whereas in 2015, this action made North Carolina the first and only state to require the use of two federally and/or state-certified BRDs. And whereas in 2015, five experimental gear combinations were tested during the summer on large vessels, and during the summer and fall of 2016, four additional gear combinations were tested on large vessels in the Pamlico Sound. And whereas in the final year of the study, 2017, three gear combinations were tested on both small and large vessels in the Atlantic Ocean and the Pamlico Sound. And whereas four of the 12 gear combinations tested to meet or exceed the 40% target reduction in finfish bycatch while also minimizing shrimp loss, browned at Al 2017 and 2018. And whereas the overall finfish bycatch reductions ranged from 4.5% to 57.2%, and differences in shrimp catch between the control and experimental nets ranged from 16.2% loss to a 9.9% gain. And whereas in 2019, Marine Fisheries required all shrimp trawlers operating in the Pamlico Sound and its tributaries to use one of the four gear combinations, which were tested and shown to reduce the finfish bycatch by 40 to 57%. And whereas shrimp trawling in North Carolina estuary waters is prohibited during the weekend, and nighttime trawling is also prohibited in several areas. And whereas approximately 1 million acres are permanently closed to shrimp trawling, which account for 47% of the state's estuary. And whereas 200,000 acres are closed seasonally to shrimp trawling with a combined total of 1,886 square miles, which are permanently or seasonally closed to shrimp trawling. And whereas a scoping document period was held January 7th through 21st, 2020, to solicit public comments on potential management strategies for Amendment 2. And whereas fishery stakeholders provided in-person comments at three scoping meetings, which were held in Washington, Morehead City, and Wilmington. And whereas Amendment 2 proposes that the northern region would include the Croatan Sound, the Roanoke Sound, the Pamlico Sound, the Pamlico River, Bay River, Neuse River, and their tributaries, along with extending existing closures in the mouth of the Stumpy Point Bay. And whereas 228,733 acres would close to shrimp trawling if selected. Now therefore be it resolved that the Dare County Board of Commissioners strongly oppose any change to the NC Shrimp Fisheries Management Plan as directed by Amendment 2, while recognizing the North Carolina shrimp fisheries as the leading, as leading the nation in bycatch reduction under current North Carolina rules and law. This is the 15th day of November, 2021.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor opposing any changes to the North Carolina shrimp fisheries management plan by Commissioner House. It's been seconded by Vice Chairman Overman and Commissioner Bateman. Floor is open for any further discussion. Hearing none, those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, likes that? Motion carries unanimous. Commissioner House, thank you for all your hard work on this. You've been, you've been our go-to guy ever since for anything related to fishing and anything coming out of this crazy group that makes these decisions. But the Vice Chairman made a suggestion of potentially maybe a letter. Would that be something that you think would help our cause in addition to this?
It definitely wouldn't hurt if we could pin one.
And I would recommend not, even though I represent the board as chair, I think it's strong enough that every one of us should sign that letter.
Yes.
Yeah, it should be sent to every commissioner on the Marine Fisheries Commission.
Yes, absolutely.
The only problem with that is they're voting on this thing on Wednesday.
Well, we can get this done tomorrow. I mean, Cheryl has my electronic signature, but I would have to rely on the rest of you to get somehow to hear to get it signed.
I can be over here anytime.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. So County Manager, can you help with the clerk to draw a...
Between the clerk and Dorothy and I, we'll give you a letter.
I saw you looking over there. I saw you.
See, give them a word that.
I mean, this, this is just hard to comprehend.
It really is. And I understand they have to review the fisheries plan every five years. I get that it's through legislation, they have to do that. One of the things that also draws near to this is that currently there is a lawsuit out that is suing the state and also the Marine Fisheries Commission in reference to bycatch with trawlers. And not only is it mentioning the state and also the Marine Fisheries Commission, and also, also named several fishing trawlers in North Carolina under the same law.
Who's the plaintiff, Stephen? Do you know? What?
The CCA.
CCA.
CCA, okay.
And so what they're, the lawsuit files about bycatch and bycatch being thrown overboard is somehow a violation of the Clean Water Act.
Oh, you've got to be kidding me.
No.
It's crap.
My take on that is, like I said, and like the resolution states, North Carolina statistically can prove we are leading the nation in bycatch reduction just because of what we're doing for management plans.
Yeah, it's clear in the resolution. It's indisputable what you just got.
And with the, there's two issues to that. Number one, I have issue with the term bycatch. Yes, if I'm fishing for shrimp and I catch a finfish, yeah, it's not my target fish, obviously. Just like if I'm bass fishing and I catch a trout, the trout is technically bycatch because I'm trying to catch a bass. But in the finfish that are caught, some of those finfish are actually legal fish that could be sold. So is that technically bycatch when I have a sellable fish? So I think that should be taken into consideration. Now, some of the bycatch that does get caught up, and of course, it's dead, it's not a sellable fish, I have to throw it overboard. Now, you remember a few months ago, I brought up to you another resolution about blue crabs, and how the Marine Fisheries is concerned about the blue crab, so they're cutting crab back. And just like Commissioner Bateman said, he's getting, you know, offers from China to sell crab meat because our crab fishery has been cut. What do the crabs in our sounds eat? Dead fish. So even though I've got a small portion of dead bycatch that I'm having to throw overboard, I'm actually supporting one of our other fisheries that's being attacked because of lack of numbers.
And if they catch too many bycatch, they move.
They move.
It's not their target.
Exactly. They'll move. One of the best things I can say about our commercial fishing is that the men and women that are out on our boats, they want to protect what's in the waters. They don't want to catch everything that's out there.
It's their livelihood.
It's their livelihood.
They're not going to destroy that.
They want their sons, their grandsons, granddaughters, great-grandsons, great-granddaughters to follow in their footsteps, just like most of the fishermen we have today are second, third, fourth, fifth-generation fishermen. But yet, the rules keep constraining them.
It's just wrong.
So we are, myself and our public information officer and her staff, we are working on something else that will bring some light to our commercial fishermen. And we're working on that pretty hard, and hopefully, within the next month or so, we'll have something out that we will present to y'all during the board meeting.
Sounds good.
So with our fisheries being done, as you know, I do a day in history. Today's no different. But today is a little bit of a history lesson. You know, when the United States declared our independence on July 4, 1776, 13 rebellious colonies met and debated how to best run the wartime government and preserve the independence and sovereignty. We've all heard of the U.S. Constitution. How many of us have heard about the Articles of the Confederation? And once I say that, everyone was tuned to think, oh, we're talking about the Civil War. The result of a year and a half of debate in New Continental Congress created the Articles of Confederation on November 15, 1777. And the states ratified the document on March 1. The Constitution formed a very limited government with marginal powers to conduct the American Revolutionary War, diplomacy, and settle territorial issues. Eight years after the ratification of the Articles of Confederation, the Constitution of the United States came into force. A lot of people don't talk about, they talk about the Letter of Independence, and they go straight to the Constitution.
Yeah, they skip the Confederation.
They skip the Articles of Confederation.
Yeah.
And those were adopted on this date in 1777. And now, our favorite part of any evening commissioner meeting, our pet of the week, meet Skippy.
Our pet of the week for this week is Skippy. This little man has a big personality. Skippy is about seven years old and has lived in a few foster homes. He connects with people very quickly and absolutely loves his squeaker toys. Skippy enjoys to go for walks, car rides, but mostly being around his people is his favorite pastime. Skippy would prefer to be the only animal in the home at this time. To adopt Skippy or foster one of our other animals, you can come visit us Monday through Saturday at our shelter located in Mantio. This week, join us here at the shelter Thursday, November 18 at 4:00 p.m. for our volunteer orientation. For more information, visit our website at www.obxspca.org, or visit our OBX SPCA Facebook page.
Who could resist that adorable little face?
Not me.
So please, take your time, go down to the OBX SPCA, check out Skippy, and also the other dogs and cats I have there, and please, give them their forever home. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner House. Appreciate it. County Manager?
Yes, sir. I have several things, and then we need a closed session. First of all, just more for information than no action, but we have received over the years grant funding from North Carolina Department of Public Safety Division of Emergency Management for raising houses in our floodplain. And we've been through two programs that we've been approved for. One was for 100% financing, where they pay for all of it. The second was a program that provided 75% of the federal cost, and then we have to match, or the property owner has to match a 25% share. The 100% matches have been approved. Some of the houses were on both programs. And where we are now is we've got these houses that will require a 25% match before we go forward. Some of the matches are substantial. I mean, $50,000, $75,000 or more for the matching share of those things. And Donna and her staff are writing letters to those property owners to let them know that they've been approved for those 75% matches, but they have not been approved for the 100%. And that for us to go forward and sign for the grant, we need to receive their matching funds. It'll also give them a choice, they're still in the 100% program, but if they choose not to give us the matching funds and take their chances in the 100% program, they might not get selected and get either one. And so they have a tough choice to make, and I just wanted you to know that was going on because I don't know if you'll get a phone call or if somebody gets left out for whatever reason, you know, they have to make... reason, you know, they have to make that decision. We can't make it for them. And if they're approved for the 75 and they try to stick it out for the 100%, and they don't get it, then they don't get anything. And so I wanted you all to be aware of that if you get phone calls. And Donna has been working with the state, and those letters, if they haven't gone out, will go out shortly to those property owners. The second thing is, we had a workshop today, and this is more for the public with you all, with regard to affordable housing. As we discussed in the workshop, it doesn't appear that the Elizabethan Hotel property is going to work, and so we've taken that off the table. We've given the consultants a number of parameters, they're running some new numbers, and that our December meeting will make some choices on what we're going to do, which direction we're going with Bowser Town. That will allow us to meet our schedule, which would get the solicitations out to the affordable housing builders right after the first of the year. And so we'll be coming back and finally, hopefully, getting that project moving. Today, another subject, Dave and I had a meeting over in Edenton this morning. Back in 2010, when Albemarle Mental Health folded and the state dissolved it, there were a number of employees that were retired and had health care provided to them by Albemarle Mental Health. Well, the entity no longer existed, and so that liability theoretically is picked up by the member counties, which we were one of. There was about, I don't know, close to $800,000, I think. Is that right, Dave? In cash in 2010 that we got from the state? And that went into a trust account, and they've been using that to pay the health insurance premiums for those retirees ever since. But that number has gone down to somewhere there's like $300,000 left. At our urging, some years ago, we asked them to put that in the state fund, which grows and draws interest the money that they do have, and they did that. However, in our urging, they've also run an actuary along that, and that $300,000 isn't likely to last till the last of those, I think it's 17 retirees passes away. And so there's going to be a need to put more money in that fund at some point. The statute says that those liabilities are divided on the date of dissolution based on the population. So using our 2010 population determines our share. Our share comes out to...
172...
$172,000. Today, the consensus of the group was that we would all start in July putting in one fifth of that because in five years is when the current $300,000 will run out. So if we put in five... A fifth of that number a year, of our share a year, then theoretically, we'll have enough money.
How much is our 172 of the total shortfall?
Total was nine... Just over $900,000.
So the $300,000 is due to run out in five years. There's a $900,000 shortfall. That would imply from today about 20 years?
Well, so the actuary ran that...
That sounds unusual to me.
The actuary ran the numbers, and assuming we had deposited the whole balance today and got a return on it, they suggested that would last the life of the fund. However, some of the smaller counties aren't able to come up with their share in one lump sum, and so they're paying it over time. I don't know the math on that. I know that it was done by the actuaries, and so that's what it came back from them.
Well, yeah, I'm just using what you told me. $300,000 lasts five years.
My own...
It wouldn't be 900 short, that's 15 more.
My only thought is I...
Well, that's with a dwindling population because...
I don't... Well, our thought is this is really not going to be enough money. Our thought is, is that the rise in health care costs, and, you know, you get one heart attack, you get three cancer patients, you get whatever happens as they get older, the cost of that care is going to go up as we've seen.
So this is not for the purchase of insurance? This is to pay?
It is. But it's 17 individual policies. They can't get a group policy.
So there are 17 people left in this population?
Is that right, Dave? Yeah. That's right.
Okay. I don't know the facts. It just sounds bizarre to me that we're going to look at a 20-year horizon for 17 people.
Yeah.
The average age...
If we find out that... And so for us, you know, we'll put in our one-fifth, we'll put that in the budget, and we'll see where it goes. I just... My thought is, is if it's not enough, we'll be coming back one day to say, okay, we need some more because depending on how long these people live.
Doesn't make any sense.
Anyway, just be aware. I didn't want you all to hear it the first time when we're meeting about it now, you know, at budget time. We engaged Albemarle Engineering, who is our county engineer, you all chose them a while back, to do a stormwater plan out on the north end. And we've gotten some preliminary results of that plan back. And what they are recommending, it's a little more detail than I'm about to describe, but essentially, culvering all of that flow of water from Airport Road through those two subdivisions, put catchment basins along the way, and then connecting it into that big ditch that's in the airport behind the EOC and behind the animal shelter. And cleaning that out, cleaning it out around all the other open ditches that feed into that, all those kinds of things. They have to do some survey work to get that going. The cost of that project, they're guessing is going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of $200,000 or less. I believe the ARP money allows us to use some of that for stormwater things, that we have a source of those funds. I don't know what the budget's going to do, if the state budget, they've got ARP money. If they allocate that for stormwater and allow us to match, then we can get some state money and use our ARP money to match that as well. We'll just have to see how that goes. But so we're moving on with that project. I'm going to tell him to go ahead and do the survey work to go ahead and get it aligned, get all the inverts the right elevation, and then at some point, we're going to be ready to bid that out and get some real numbers to put to that. So I wanted you to know that has been in the works. It's taken a while. I don't know if you... You probably don't use surveyors, but getting a surveyor right now is very, very difficult and time-consuming. But so that's where we are, just a short update in case you're getting questions about that. And then the last thing that I had on my list was... Is Mr. Hallwell still here? But interesting that he showed up tonight. I was going to just tell you what was going on a little bit with Kinnickke Shores. You know, that, as you've seen, that wastewater plant down there in Kinnickke Shores has not been maintained, and they have done a moratorium on any new developments, which has left a lot of property owners who are prepared to build in the lurch because they can't get a building permit. I called the North Carolina Division of Water Quality to see if there was something we could do to help push it along. Water Quality said, no, there wasn't any methodology or statute or anything that would allow a county to do anything about that. It was a water quality issue or a Utilities Commission issue. So I called the Utilities Commission as well. I talked to them. They have it in their enforcement mechanism, and they're going through with that. I asked them as well, what can we do to expedite this? How can we make this faster? You know, we're concerned that we've got these people out here that have lots and they can't use them, and they're left hanging, and what can we do to move it along? And he basically said, there's nothing that you can do to move that along. It's something they have to do. They're the only entity that has that authority. They're working with Water Quality, and that they're... They'll move it, and they'll move as quickly as they could. They understood the urgency of it. But so that's where we are. If you're getting calls, what can we do? What's a county going to do? There is no statutory provision for a county to do anything with a private system like that. Only the Utilities Commission can do it, can take it over, can move it. And so if Mr. Hallwell comes through and repairs it and does it as he suggested tonight, then the problem gets resolved. And if he doesn't, then there's enforcement mechanisms with the Utilities Commission where they'll come in and do something as well.
So Mr. Hallwell's answer to the problems that exist, which should have been done all along, his answer to that is a rate increase that he's going to apply for an emergency rate increase to take care of problems at the wastewater treatment plant that he should have been doing all along? So that's his answer? That's what I gathered tonight? Is that what y'all gathered?
Yeah, I heard.
Yep.
So, and then we'll have something for us next meeting?
Well...
Yeah, I believe that if...
Well, and the utility commissions has to act on that as well. So there's going to be something... The solution will involve the Utilities Commission, whatever that solution is.
I mean, I question his reason for showing up tonight and making a comment, a public comment, to let us know that he's applying for an emergency rate increase, asking for an emergency rate increase. I mean, what was the purpose of showing up tonight and telling us that?
Probably to get ahead of it.
Yeah. Pardon?
Probably to get ahead of it.
Yeah, well, it'll be anxious.
What's going to happen is if he makes a... I would assume that it... I don't know the procedure for this, but I would expect folks at... Was it Kinnickke Shores?
Yeah.
They might have a reason to rebut that, and they may show up here. So he was just trying to get out in front of it, I would think.
It'll be interesting. And I quoted, I quote, "We'll have something for us for our next meeting." That ought to be interesting.
Bobby, how does that affect the theater repurposing? They already have a septic permit or a sewage allotment on that system, but it's a complete...
I don't know the answer, but I have talked to that developer, and he... I don't know if he said it directly implied he could manage with or without it. So I'm assuming he's got a plan for that as well. The issue that's going to come up down there is there are... When those subdivisions were allowed to subdivide, because they had central sewage, they were allowed to subdivide with smaller lots, with like 12,000-foot lots, where we require 15,000 square foot lots. So those property owners now who have vacant lots are going to want to come in and put septic systems on these little tiny 12,000-foot lots, and they're not eligible. And Donna's been telling them that. And so, you know, they're kind of, again, left in the lurch, and we can't help them there. There's also been some talk about, there's 51 lots in a subdivision, and using a common area to build their own package plant for those 51 lots. And I don't know whether that's going anywhere, whether that's feasible or not, but the only issue that I have there is if they do that, and the long-term viability of the existing plant counts on the future capital of those 51 lots, and we've taken that out of the mix, then does that harm the residents that are already there? I don't know the answer to that, but it's something that we have to know before we start approving those things to be sure that we don't create a negative unintended consequence.
Bobby, would somebody that has a 12,000-square-foot lot that was depending upon that sewage facility, to allow them to build on that lot? Would they have standing? Would they have cause to, you know, grounds to challenge that?
I would say yes. I mean, they made an investment decision on a promise of sewer that doesn't now exist, and it's made their lot virtually valueless.
If they could prove, or first workers had proven, no maintenance has been done on that, I would suspect they...
I mean, somehow or another, they're entitled to their sewage, and it's going to be incumbent on them, the owner, to make that viable, to live up to his obligations. And if he cannot, then the Utilities Commission will step in and take action to make it happen in a different way. Chairman, that's all I have, other than I do need that closed session after you've spoken...
Absolutely. Absolutely.
With Dorothy and Dave.
I'll come back to you.
Okay.
Public Information Director, Ms. Hester, do you have anything this evening?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Clausen, anything else?
Just quickly, the debt for the Manio property purchase and the Mako Mikes will close next Monday.
All right.
I don't know how much of anything Bobby wants to say about Town Beach Nurishment, but the local government commission has changed their deadline to this Friday, the 19th, and thanks to our auditor who got us worked the weekend and got us the statements for the airport and the community centers, we have a draft of audit, and we're going to go ahead and submit the final on Friday, which, you know, that'll take care of that part of it, but not the permit part.
So we're back to where we were. We don't have a permit. The LGC's telling us we can't go to the meeting in December without the permit. The permit's being held up by the nationwide pause, I think that's what they call it, on 401 water quality permits. And so we're sitting there at the behest of somebody in Washington, D.C., waiting for them to allow our local corps to turn loose of our permits. And if we don't get those in by the end of the week, then we miss our December deadline to get to the LGC, which we've got to have their approval. So we're still in this catch-22 that we can't control. I have talked to our legislative delegation in Washington, D.C. They have called me back multiple times. They've made multiple... They're trying to do all they can do to help us unlog this, as I think I've... The Corps of Engineers. And, you know, and the thing that's a little bit frustrating is they've... There's the 2020 rules is what got repealed, and that would make the 2002 rules come into place, and we comply with both of them. So we don't really care which rules they use, just apply one or the other and give us our permits. And we can't get them to make that logical leap. They're just saying, we'll let you know. So, and it's not our local folks. It's not out of Wilmington or out of Little Washington. It's out of D.C.
Right.
On another issue with nourishment, and this is fishing. Dave, do you know if we have, if there's any history out there with respects to FEMA? When you have an engineered beach, you have a storm, you lose part of the beach. So we do... We test, and then we do post. Is there any history that, what if you get a double hit? Could you go back and apply for additional FEMA reimbursement on a second hit?
If they're both declared, yes.
It has to be declared, Dave.
Yes, sir.
It has to be declared.
They'd have to be far enough apart you could measure it, too.
Gotcha.
I mean, you got to have a before and after.
Yeah, and the reason I was fishing is this last storm wasn't declared, so... But, you know, you got to fish, you got to fish, you know? You got to hope. You got to throw that sinker out there, lying there to see somebody will grab it. But anyhow, I just, it doesn't hurt to ask. So... Sorry?
The only other thing, Buxton and Avon, the bid opening is Wednesday. Hotching and Tim have made the bids spec that the bids be held for 90 days, which is February 15th. So we're planning to go to the LGC meeting in February. And we got the bank worked out, Regions Bank, that is financing our debt for the Towns Beach Nurishment, has agreed to allow us to use the courthouse for collateral again for the second debt issuance. We got their consent on that, so we're ready. We will be ready to go, so...
Well, County Manager and I went down Monday after the storm, and I mean, I'm quite surprised that, especially Avon, north of the pier, we only counted about, what, eight breaches, Bobby? Eight to 10 breaches? The rest of the dunes were there, which was quite surprising. And quite honestly, we've seen worse on NC-12 than we actually saw that Monday. But hats off to NC DOT again. But on the way back, it was dark and was pushing 6 o'clock, and Merlot was really bad when we went through there. We came back, and we had already gone through it and didn't even recognize it, and we were right at the foot of the bridge, and we said, wait, wait, wait. That's a well they had cleaned up, that area, that we didn't even recognize it when we came back through. Of course, it was done. We were at the foot of the bridge already, and said, wait a minute, how'd we miss that? But it... Hats off to NC DOT, so... All right, County Manager, you want to...
Yes, sir. I need a closed session pursuant to NCGS 143 318 11A3 to consult with an attorney employed. an attorney, employee retained by the county in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege and to receive an update on the opioid litigation and improve the minutes of the last closed session. And also pursuant to NCGS 143 through 1811A6 to review the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment or conditions of initial employment of an individual public officer, employee, or prospective public officer or employee.
Is a motion to go to closed session?
So moved.
Second, Commissioner Tobin, House. Those in favor of the motion signify saying aye.
Aye.
Call the Dare County Board of Commissioners meeting back to order. And County Manager, turn it over to you.
As y'all have read, probably in paper, the opioid settlement has now settled in final. And as we discussed at closed session, it's time for us to decide if we're going to accept that opioid settlement. You all had indicated that you were prepared to accept that settlement and move forward so that we could start getting some money to start working on this problem in Dare County. With that said, I need a motion to approve the opioid settlement and with that formal approval, that will allow me to sign the settlement agreement. And there may be more than one, so you may say to sign all of the settlement agreements that come for that, so we don't have to keep coming back and doing this.
Move to approve.
Second. Is a motion on the floor by the Vice Chairman to approve, it's been seconded by Commissioner Bateman and Commissioner Tobin, excuse me. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimously.
And then the other action in the closed session was the board approve the minutes of the last closed session.
Okay. Thank you, County Manager. That brings us to an adjournment and I need a motion to adjourn until 9:00 AM on December the 6th.
So moved.
Motion on the floor by Commissioner House, been seconded by Commissioner Ross. Any further discussion?
Tobin.
Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, who's like sign? Motion carries unanimously.